Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to the February 18th, 2020 council meeting, and I'd like to call it to order at 7:10 p.m. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda tonight? Hi, everyone. You would like to make a motion? Do you accept the agenda?
I'll make a motion when we accept the agenda as written.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Webb seconded. All's in favor, if you can find me saying aye.
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 Damn, we didn't get to do a real call.
I know. All right.
Any presentations tonight, other than the Chiefs? Okay, Mayor's Report. My turn to pick the Citizen of the Month of February, and this individual's been on my radar for quite some time, ever since I started this program last year. I chose Sandy Welch to be the Citizen of the Month of February, and before I present her award, I'd like to give you a little bit of history. Sandy was born and raised here in Renonee. In fact, her birthday was just this month, so happy birthday, Sandy. But she's been the Executive Director of Renonee Care since 2001, so almost 20 years. She's served our community in that capacity, and she still holds that position. She also is the Senior Board Secretary. She's held that position for about 10 years now with our seniors. She's on her worship team at Grace, and she really enjoys that and gets a lot of good things from that. I started working down there at Food Bank about a year ago, unloading freight, working on the trailer. I watched Sandy. She's kind of like a conductor, organizing all those volunteers and making sure everything gets put in its proper place, and you've been an inspiration to me, just getting to know you better in that capacity. So, thank you for what you've done for the citizens of Renonee, and with that, I'd like to present you with this award.
Thanks. Yes, thank you.
Can we get a picture?
Sure.
Great, thank you.
Good job, Sandy.
We'll get her some fancy digs here pretty soon.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
I already bent two of them.
And thank you for all your input for the new senior centering and that, and over too, so.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Sandy.
That's another 20 years of work.
Yeah. Okay, are there any counselor committee meeting reports tonight?
I have one.
Okay.
If anybody else wants to.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Okay. The Cemetery Committee met. They've been on hiatus there for, I think this is three months or so. So they had some interesting, we had an interesting meeting. See if I can make any sense of what I wrote down there. I don't know how many folks have been up to the cemetery recently, but our new care digger is certainly paying off. The place has all cleaned up, the grass has been reseeded. It's looking to mark improvement from, even though the fellow that was there last was good too, he did a good job too, but Tom seems to be really, really making a dent in that up there, so. Then we had a staff report, and Ben talked about the discussion of items that are left in Memorial up there, that if they're left for too long, they'll collect them, but they may end up getting tossed away, so it might be something to keep in mind if you put stuff up there, that there is a flight span that they start to look kind of, don't look real well, the weather's hard on them, and especially during the mowing season, there's gonna be a rule, I think, that probably, yeah, I said, you put them up, you gotta take them down, because it just makes for a lot of work for that guy. The shop is complete. They're working right now on the interior, trying to get some batches and stuff made in there, and so that's coming along. I don't know if you guys have been up there and seen it, but you might want to take a drive up there and look at it. So far, I haven't looked inside of it, because it won't let me, so hopefully one of these days, somebody will be up there. The material on our privacy fence, what was it that they figured out that the cost of putting them in was gonna be $15,000 bucks or something like that?
They paid someone?
Yeah. So the crew came up with, the help of the city administrator, they're just gonna buy the materials, which basically comes to $2,000, and then with the help of Mr. Wrench as a guide for staff, they're gonna go ahead and complete the fence, so.
Who was helping him?
Alan Wrench.
Oh, Alan.
Yeah.
Alan Heinz.
Heinz, what?
Alan Heinz.
Heinz, that guy too.
I remember Alan, so do I.
Yeah, I don't know why.
He's over in La Poggi.
Is he?
Yeah.
My fault, I'm old and losing.
I thought maybe that was Alan Heinz's nickname, so.
Yeah.
I couldn't figure out who you were talking.
Don't hesitate to straighten them out, because the older I get, the worse I get. They're gonna start in the next couple of weeks, working on the road and reestablishing it back to its original place, because the grass has encroached on it so bad that, so there's gonna be some road grading and some with the box, I think the box scraper, and then filling in the chuckles and trying to get it back into shape so that people who are not driving across the graves, we've had issues with that. Fortunately, the ballers have kind of solved a little bit of that, but I think we need more, and that'll be an issue that we may end up discussing more. The bench is ready to be installable, so we'll get that, the memorial bench that's down there. Tell me what the.
So lower section of K.
Yeah, so when the armory drive dome, it's down there towards the corner where the armory is. Speaking of the armory, that's coming down, and we're gonna replace it with something that, hopefully, I don't know, we're trying to decide between metal or wood, but something that looks a little better. So we've run into some problems with the culverin, that the people that we were working with to come up with that changed hands, didn't they? And so there's some quality issues, and so we're working on getting someone else to provide that, and there's quite a few people that do that, so it's just a matter of getting that done. I talked to the city administrator today, one of the things they wanted to do was replace the sign at the entrance, that it was getting kind of shoddy, so that's gonna come down, and the new one's gonna come up, and the idea is to put it up there where the roadies are on the bank, and then as you get into the cemetery, there will be some smaller signs with rules that explain, you know, the things that, what is Ben's proper?
He's the cemetery clerk.
Cemetery clerk. He brought up an issue today, and I think one of the ways that maybe this might be an appropriate place to do it, but folks like to walk up there, and they like to take their dogs up there, and please remove what your dog leaves there. It's an issue, so we're talking about maybe putting up some.
To the street.
Yeah.
No, it was the cemetery.
So.
For the county backs, if you don't wanna ban that.
Yeah, rather than making a big deal out of it, maybe if people just, if they know, maybe they'll think about it and kind of cut down a little what's going on there. One of the members of the committee, Elaine, what's her last name?
Davidson.
Davidson. She's really a good addition, excellent. She has come up with a deal that one of the cemeteries that she, her family is associated to where they sell these bricks, and they're for people that grew up here or went to school here, and then they move away, and they, you know, they develop a new life in a different location, and their families there, and so they end up being buried there when they pass on in that new, but they would like to, they still think of Renonee as their hometown. So this, these bricks, this is an idea, that you get etched on your name, and then, you know, and then somehow we can incorporate that into the.
That's a great idea.
I think so.
Could it be like around the flagpole or something?
We were talking about that today, but the thing that we don't want to do is, is we don't want to undercut that culverin, and one of the things that we've done there is that part of that is people can get their names etched on the side of it. We need to pay for that. We need to pay for the next one, you know, so it has to be competitive in the sense that it's not, this is not a profit-making enterprise.
No.
But it should run, be running a business like Manor, so that, because the more care that people want taken care of that, and that seems to be constantly stressed, it costs money to do that, it's wages and so.
Well, I don't know the cost of that brick, but I wonder if the niche wall fee came with a brick, and then it wouldn't take away from people that just wanted a brick?
I'm not sure I understand, could you say that again?
Well, so Bruce was talking about the end of the niche wall has a marble plaque, separate from the little spots that would say in remembrance, and then people's names could be listed on there, so this is kind of the same thing, but you don't want this to be such a cheaper option that everybody goes for bricks and nothing's left.
I hate to be, I hate to be that way about it.
No, I was just saying if the price of the niche wall was enough to where a brick was also included, but then it was also priced just for the bricks.
I don't know, that would, that might be a better, that might be a workable solution, if I understand the way you're going on.
Yeah, just say it was $300 to put your name on it, but it also came with a brick that you can add around the flagpole, and then it doesn't give them the option, well, I'll just get a brick.
Yeah, I'll talk to you later on about it, you know, I mean, that's a good idea, and I'll get that back to the committee, thank you, I appreciate that. That's what, that's what we're looking for here, is input from the rest of the council, you know, so. Then the city administrator has made getting ahold of the Eagle Scout, get the flag moved, and we'd like to have that for Memorial Day too, because they're planning on, starting to plan on that right now, so.
Is there a plan on the niche wall? We've been talking about that for a while, I mean, when construction maybe would start?
We want to have it.
Yeah, so now that we have the house money, they have a layout, and they have a stake where it's gonna be and the size and what we're gonna purchase, but when that, it was a family-run business, and then it switched hands to not a family.
Oh.
So that's where we're having like communication issues, getting information back from them, so it's making us wary to spend this huge amount of money, and is the kind of investment that the family-run business, kind of, they were just more welcoming and always write back to respond to you, so we're looking at a couple other businesses to see.
Not sure if we're on that road yet, huh? Okay.
So we have a plan, we know what one we want, we know the color, they picked all of that stuff out, um, niches and houses, and it's just the supplier that we're having a little issue with.
I hope to see it done sometime by the, in the fall, before fall this year, so, you know, as the weather gets, because there's some certain amount of pouring concrete and stuffs.
Yeah, needs to happen.
It's just a matter of a few glitches there, and get it done, so anyhow, it was a good meeting.
Thank you, Counselor.
Yeah.
A lot of good information you brought back here, and it sounds like you're getting ready for the spring and Memorial Day, and.
Yeah, I would like to add one more thing there.
Yeah.
After this meeting that I had, we talked about having a joint meeting with the committees and the council to move forward on that. I don't know how that fits into your scheduling, you know, but I think that it would, something that really should be moved up the list, and this process seems to be working well. It just needs to be formalized in a few areas that I know it certainly would help my chairman and my secretary of committee, so.
Thank you.
Anyway, with your indulgence.
Red. One question for Josat. Do you recall how much the food station we purchased from John Park was?
It was around 200, and the risk is we don't, we were trying to think of maybe a discreet way to just put one of those boxes in a little hidey hole, and kind of a little sign that says if you bring your friend here, please do this, because we don't want it to be like, hey, walk your dog in the cemetery, but Ben's just seeing a lot more people not picking up.
That's what I was gonna ask you, whether that, something like that would encourage people to go up there and do it, because I know people who do often.
Yeah, and one other option that I and I talked about after Counselor McNair, like, is maybe putting some sort of station like that right by our maintenance fence, which wouldn't actually be in the cemetery, but would give people a clue that that's available ahead of getting into the cemetery, because they're walking right by it.
So we've confirmed this is people walking their dog, not dogs just going over there?
No, it's people walking their dogs, or, or, you know, their dog, they go to the area that visits, and one of their dog kind of walks around. It's not, it's not.
They're not prepared for it, it sounds like, and then there's nothing there to.
Yeah, there's garbage cans there, but they're not prepared for the picking it up, so we're kind of brainstorming options for having something that's not having to be in the cemetery, because that seems like weird to us.
I can't imagine there's a dog running free in this town, but Holly isn't right on his tail.
For giving a Facebook.
Yeah, I was gonna say, but if they're posting it once in a while, that's what works, and if it's posted, it works.
Why don't you post that? No, I mean seriously.
I know, I.
Yeah, it's tactfully posting does a lot.
Okay, I attended a senior board meeting last Friday morning, and for the month of January, the thrift store brought in $3,389.38, which is another good month, $3,300 you said? And also, income from the rental cabin brought in for the month of January, $756, which is a pretty good month. Shortly, they're gonna be taking applications and resumes, looking for resumes for a cook and an office manager, that's coming up there pretty soon for the new senior center and Food Bank, and let's see, there was also discussion pertaining to the cabin, of renting it out Sunday through Thursday at a rate of $15 an hour, and then for a day use, say if somebody wanted to play cards or games, for example, and then $30 an hour if they with the kitchen, so.
And that would not supersede somebody having a reservation?
Right.
That would take priority?
That would be in the vision.
Yeah.
Good meeting, and so I'm going to take our first bus run on March 26th to Camp 18 for lunch, and probably have a sign-up sheet at the next meeting at the senior board meetings for that.
As well, you're a retired senior board member.
Anyway, and that's all I have on the senior. I didn't go to, I wasn't able to attend the library meeting last month, so. Any other meetings?
Mine's tomorrow, but I would like to say we have a fairly new parks committee, and I think it's, there's been some turnover and a bunch of new people, and there's some people that really, I think were really wanting to do something, and we were talking about, they were talking about developing a campground at the lake, and then I just wanna kind of caution that when we load up the committees with a bunch of things to do, it almost gets, seems to make them like you're hampering them moving forward, and it really is discouraging, and it makes them want to just give up and probably say to heck with it and walk away. So I just wanted to make sure if council was really on board with developing some campsites down there, and they were willing to do the work, I think, for a lot of it, but when you set up all the barriers in front, it just makes it seem like maybe staff and council's not behind them, so I just wanna bring that to our council's attention. I think it's a good idea, I think we talked about it down there, but I know there's concerns about maintenance and all these other things, but I think we need to do a better job of working with them and not putting barriers in front of them, so.
Yeah, I think it's highly important that we work with staff, the doable, you know, that, that doesn't mean that we just have to take everything they say.
No, I understand.
But I think that it's imperative that we work together in tandem.
Exactly.
And that we take the time and the effort to listen to what their view on it, because they have the institutional knowledge of what's going on around here, you know what I mean? So that, just from that point of view, but I don't see any reason why, you know, anytime, but I agree with you about not loading up the committees with too much to do. They do well when they're focused on certain things, and, you know, that is within their realm to.
So, yeah, and I read in one, seven minutes there, I think, on the park, and now what was, there was something about down there at the lake, something about survey, or what was that that was kind of holding that up?
Well, so staff has a lot of concerns about the direction they want to go with that campground, because they wanted to add overnight RV spots around the earth face, and they wanted to kind of go in themselves and do some earthwork, and staff had some concern about that. There's a survey mark, there's a monument in the corner that donates private property to the city's property, and they're saying they can't find that, so before we go paying for the survey, or that needs to be something council kind of was, we, why JR probably bringing it up, is at their last meeting, we couldn't tell council had been presented with that full plan, and then they kind of additionally started talking about tent sites up on the bank across the parking lot, which, so it's kind of, that's our concern.
Yeah.
We said come in with more of drawing of what you're doing to show us kind of really what are you focusing on, is it just overnight primitive sites, then that's one maintenance thing, if it's more flushed out and maintained, then that's a different cost over time.
Right.
So we kind of couldn't get from them, it was all kind of talk and not exactly that's enough.
Right.
So that's what we talked, I talked to them about, but I don't know what you're reading.
Well, and I think it was to that, it was to that point.
Was this a proposal that Skip was working on?
I think the whole committee, but Skip was probably.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, trying to figure out where we were at.
Skip and Jason were the main driver that were willing to get out and start something, but then, you know, there's, it's gotta be, if you throw up barriers, and then you throw up another barrier, pretty soon they think, we don't want it.
Right.
So I just wanted, if we don't want it, we need to tell them we don't want it, not drag it out six, eight months, and then, you know what I mean?
All that.
The concern is, is were you guys presented with a plan?
I don't, I don't.
Because that's what we, we wouldn't let any committee do something without, hey, this is what we want to do, and council going, uh-huh, and then staff gets behind it and helps them pull it off, right? So that's my concern, is I never saw a plan, and so I wasn't gonna be pro-pro something that you guys hadn't approved of plan.
Well, I agree with that, they need to develop a plan, and that's fine, but I just wanted to bring it to attention in case some people at council weren't behind getting some development of some camping areas down there, they're talking about some RV sections, and maybe they don't go as big as they think, maybe they just need to get two or three spots, you know, see how it goes, I don't know, but maybe it's something we need to talk about, is agree a little bit, so.
Because then we were kind of talking, do we make them buy from the Parkos, how do we do the camping fees, there was just some logistical things that a plan should kind of lay out, if they say, oh, but we're thinking the Parkos is gonna check in on and get the fee, then that's one.
Yeah, I think staff, I think the staff was gonna check to see if the machine can be programmed, and I don't know if that's happened yet or not.
It can be programmed for primitive, I think it can be programmed for two fees, right? A camping fee and a parking fee, but whether or not you guys would want to charge the same tent spot as an RV spot, that was gonna be the make or rate, and we looked into upgrading the machine to take cards and have more options, and that's pretty cost prohibitive at this point, unless we're doing something thoughtful, but that's kind of where we are.
I get your grift, though, Councilman.
Yeah, I'm not trying to beat on anybody, I'm just letting them know, and if some of the committees, or at least the committee I'm on, it seems like they can get deflated with, do we really want this or not? Sometimes I think they feel the message some way comes from staff, it's coming from council at the same time, so. It was just a note kind of to self and to all of us, that, just to be aware of that, that we've seen that went through some people, and I don't want to keep that cycle going when they feel like they can't accomplish things, but.
So, and I remember in the past, I probably did mention this in council, because walking around here all the time, and we have had RVs camping down here off and on, I mean, it's just the reality, and we thought, well, we might as well capitalize on this.
Right, and that was one thing staff heard, but then this became like a bigger thing, and then it was like, you put in fire rates, so I don't know what their plan is.
Right, no, and I definitely agree with staff, that the direction back to parks should be to, you know, bring us a plan, maybe something that is in stages.
Yes.
You know, it's kind of modular design, so we can kind of, if it works and the demand's there, we keep working.
I like, I think we're.
That's something for parks to work on, but, yeah, I want to see something before us, I'd like a presentation and maps, and what I've always said, a little bit of a cost analysis, and what's the cost of this, what do you think our revenues are gonna be, you know?
Well, I even told Skip, if he wanted to come in, I could help him make a map and do some stuff, if he needs that, so.
I'll relay the message tomorrow, and let them know that there's not a big barrier, just some things they need to do. Thanks, Susan, head's up.
Well, more procedural.
Yeah.
That this discussion, I would again like to see under an appropriate category, so that we can really be dealing with it as council work, not, because this is supposed to be just a meeting report, this is very scripted as to what we're supposed to be doing, which was what I was going to ask, is if we couldn't carry this on till later so that we can have a full discussion about it, and then again, you know, I will bring my points up then.
What would be the appropriate?
Items for mayor, council, city administrator?
Okay.
Or asked it to be brought up at a future meeting?
I would go with the first. I recognize what she's saying, but I do also have some more to add to that.
You done, JR?
Oh, I'm done.
All right, thank you. Okay, topics from the floor tonight, none. Memo regarding PA 19-01. Everybody read it?
Yep. Three times. I read that, I had a question, or I had a comment on that. Can I get a copy of this 866 and?
Can I get a copy of this 866 and?
Take another copy, you guys.
I'd love to drop on this by all tiers, Stan.
Well, it's online. You can type up the same search criteria that Dale typed up and find it online.
Yeah.
But no, I, yeah.
Parking restrictions, Brunnhilde.
So do you guys have a issue with sending it back to planning to address the?
Nope, I don't.
Code text, did things matter, it said there?
I think it's entirely appropriate. I wish I could remember that as well. So far, everybody I've talked to that had anything to do with it doesn't remember it.
So, I can speak briefly to that, sorry. I did approach Dan Brown, who was planning commissioner at that time. I was on planning mission and his statement that, you know, although we are both kind of foggy, if you want to put it that way, on what was occurring at that time, because that was a long time ago, neither of us remembered actually being approved. We had talked about it and brought it forth to, you know, send it on to council, but don't recall the result.
Well, I remember the discussion that we had and all the, you know, tears and blood that was sweated over it. But I do not remember the vote. And I definitely don't remember having the $10 that we settled on that. That was really a contentious issue.
Joanne Glass.
It's been a long time.
Was there, looking for the date.
It's November 12. The 2012.
When it will affect July 2013, it was voted on by this council.
Signed by Joseph Mitchell.
Yeah. On November 7, 2012. Resolution 886.
So that was.
It's 886. An ordinance, 886.
But there was adopted parking or rules before this. Am I correct?
Well, we have parking standards.
Right, the standard was there and then this came along, right?
Well, the standard came, this came along for kind of the same purpose. But what one of the things is, is we, what that one really lays out is that a report would be done of the whole downtown core. And if you did not have the parking you needed, you were paying that fee.
Mm-hmm.
If you have the parking you needed, then you're off the hook. The report was supposed to be done between November and July, a credit report for how many parking spots people did have, and then how many they were required to have for the use of their building. And the fee was supposed to become in effect in July 13. It was pretty much a perfect storm because we had a switch over of two different planners, we had a switch over of four different administrators, and we had a whole switch over of council at the time. When looking back, staff found that between November, or July of 2013 and 2017, there was not one site development review that required a parking review. So in four years, and all those switches, there was no one until the Brunson Building that triggered, hey, do you have enough parking? The rest of them were either the same kind of business going into the exact same building. The only one that required one was in that timeframe was before that, and that was in 2011, and it was Blue House.
What about subway?
Being a total change from City Hall to a restaurant.
When did Subway go in? That would have triggered something.
But Subway had their own parking. There was nobody that did not have their required parking in a change of use in the building or an enlargement. Blue House, and then 2017 was when we started talking to the posters.
Did you ever research, I don't think I asked you, when the first standard for parking ever hit Brunnhilde? Because I'm thinking we went probably 100 years without any kind of a rule.
Yes, there's multiple renditions of what was Title IX. We started doing that research and Subway's still working on that to look back into the ordinances. But the ordinances all got codified in 2012. So, all the ordinances that had to do with land use action over time got squished into Title IX.
Okay.
And then their ordinance numbers fell away, right? We don't do it by individual ordinance because it's all in there. So, we're trying to look back on all that list of numbers of ordinances way back to figure out what made up Title IX and what part of it was parking. But she was, had sickness today, so she isn't here.
Mayor, I have a point of inquiry of council. What would be the value of that request that you asked?
To know when we started.
Yeah.
Going back. Well, because, well, I'm interested in history.
Oh.
Because I'm interested in, sometimes government can make a rule and then find out there's consequences and do another rule to try to, and then you do another rule. And sometimes it's better to go right back to the beginning and see where all this started and, and what it's caused. And that's, I just wondered if.
I was just trying to get, I wanted to.
I just wanted to know, like, 1980s, they started a rule.
I just wanted to get your, try and get into your understanding of what you, what you were looking for there. Because I'm not questioning the value, I'm just trying to get a better understanding of what you're after.
I have just kind of a history of what a parking requirement of any kind hit Brunnhilde if we knew that information.
Well, thank you for clarifying that. So, just to recap, 886, there was, that, that just dealt with the parking requirements?
Mm-hmm.
That's all that was in that ordinance?
Yes, in the public hearings, there was another part of Title IX that was addressed. But 886 is related to developing that system, right? A to play kind of system for people that either didn't have sufficient parking or were enlarging or building a new building and couldn't have sufficient parking because their footprint was this law or whatever.
My remembrance of that, going through that was that basically the fee was something that we were trying to develop, a method to develop these parking spots.
Yeah. We were going to do any of the money.
Right.
And the one payment, the city was not going to outweigh funds ahead of the money that we had. So maybe the people paid into it and it just sat there until we had the $150 to stray it or whatever the costs were.
So, in that, in that, the context of that, we were trying to do something where the entire business community had.
No, only the people with insufficient parking.
I thought it was off street parking.
It is, that is, that's what I'm saying. So like, same RNS market, they purchased three lots, they have their sufficient parking. They would not be, in that day, they would have not been affected by this fee. Subway had sufficient parking. The post office had sufficient parking for what their, if you went by the code and said, okay, they had this much retail space or whatever, right? And you did the calculations. And that's what staff at the time was supposed to be doing, was that calculation report to then institute this in July of 2013.
But I do remember that there was some, some effort done at that time to qualify certain places that needed that, off-street parking. I remember where the, the, what's the proper term?
Treasure.
CB.
Yeah.
Naturals, that was the thing doing this. Was there, was it the issue? Because there was two businesses there. There was the weather business and then, and they were pretty against it. Because they identified that they would have to pay. They would end up having to pay some.
Right, so it was anybody with insufficient off-street parking. That's the report that was supposed to be done by staff. The staff at the time, we cannot find a report.
Right. So they were just doing it independently on their own. They were coming up with identifying that, they would probably get stuck with this.
Right, because they, they could read the code and figure out what their square footage was in relation to what the code required.
Okay, so then the staff had not done any.
No, we could not find a credit or a data set that actually went, because we don't know what everyone's, you know, we don't go into everyone's things. I guess they probably just didn't.
So, what did, and I know we're not supposed to get into planning's issues, but in the planning commission, what were they working on? They must have identified there was an issue there and they needed to move forward on it. Mr. Brown, I know he was the driving force behind that.
Well, you can look at the linear feat of on-street parking, right? And easily figure out that if there's this many businesses and this many things, they don't have it, even if you count the on-street parking. So I think what their report was, if I'm remembering right, was the on-street parking was calculated. The in-the-businesses report didn't happen after the fact like it was supposed to.
I, I don't mean to put you on the spot.
No.
I'm just trying to, in my mind, I remember there was a certain amount of information that did flow to us.
Yeah.
And regardless, and it was not just supposition, it was.
No, it was based on, I remember the maps showing how many parking spots you could fit, how many cars could fit there, right? But I, but there wasn't an internal building one that, that we can find. And we've searched all the computer records because we don't throw anything away. And all the old employees boxes that we still have from different projects.
I'm, I would like to simply challenge, gently push back is what I should say, the statement that Mr. Brown was the driving force behind that.
I probably, yeah, probably, I just, was he the chairman at the time?
He was the, the chair of the planning commission, yes. But that was not a driving force. There was a lot of collaboration with council as to what we were directed as planning commission to work on.
Okay. I strike my.
I have a question, and you can stop me if it's not the right time to do it. But does this in any way impact the contract that the people at the Brunson Building had to sign to get their permit and then when this is already in force?
Well, so there's issues with this one because it doesn't negatively affect them at all, right? So if anything, the one issue with 886 is amounts of fees are not supposed to be in the ordinance. Otherwise, every time you're changing the fee, you're redoing the ordinance. So that was kind of one mistake. That should really be in the master fee schedule. Whether it stays $10, goes to the $83, whatever you guys determine. That's one thing we need to do to clean it. And then, planning and then council need to have the discussion, is the intent of 886 what you really want still? Do you want staff to do a footprint determination and require all businesses that have insufficient parking to pay the fee? Or are you wanting to go with only new and enlarged businesses that have insufficient parking, having this as an option? So that's one of the other things that kind of, if, if someone's allowed to come in and pay me $10 and get a spot there, then that, what that triggers is staff doing the whole thing and going for everybody that doesn't have sufficient parking. Which I didn't think, I wasn't sure where council was on that, that version. And whether or not they really wanted to. Because if we're, if upholding the $10 part, we're going to have to uphold that everyone's that doesn't have sufficient parking's part of the part. So that's why we stalled it and wanted to push it back to council because it had elements in here that were never completed and we need to know staff. Is that something you'd like us to complete and move forward on? Or are you more going with it's a voluntary option for increased or new business? If that makes sense.
So, are you interpreting that 886 says it's, it's all businesses?
It says new and existing businesses.
Because I thought I read in there where it had the same caveat of only when they change a use or a footprint.
One section of it says that, Dale. The other section says any new and existing business that has insufficient parking, like on point two. So that's also where it's confusing, which are you saying?
Okay.
So there's a whole bunch of issues. And that's what's concerning to me, that it went through with so many issues of fee and most of the people that are still here that were here don't remember it passing. So I think that's concerning, but it's one of those.
Okay, we need to have a bigger conversation about this.
Well, so that's the thing is that potentially what we would like, staff would like council to do is direct it back to planning to rewrite the section that holds the fee to the master fee schedule where you guys would change it annually if that's your, if that's what you'd like. And then add this into the code, whatever, make a spot for when you guys adopt whatever it becomes, that that has a spot in code because it currently isn't in there like this as an option. And then text changes, just clean up whether it's for everybody, if it's just for new and existing, or new and enlarged, or you want the staff to do the report that was mentioned in there. Those are all the things we kind of have to hash out before we say, okay, here's the fee, come pay it.
Quite a bit of work to be done.
Yeah.
And also, I'd like to see the, the business license application designate a parking requirement on the application itself so you know that when that license fee is collected annually, it'll go into the special fund for that, for this parking. Otherwise, it gets lost in the general fund, which it probably has in the past.
No, it's never been collected.
Never goes collected.
Never gone this way. Yeah, but I mean.
Yeah, it, we haven't collected anybody because that's the first, this is the first one that ever triggered a voluntary option. Usually, they either have their own parking or they lease parking.
Right.
When Black Bear got the extra barroom gaming area, they leased parking from RNS. That's how, they came in with a document that says, that proved they were leasing parking. The calculation was done and they met their requirement. So there's nobody that's ever paid into it.
Right.
Because from 13 to 17, we had no parking requirement. Because nothing changed drastically from not just a restaurant to a restaurant or whatever was already there and kind of grandfathered in. But I agree with you. One of the things that we were talking about is not so much on the application because depending on what you guys do, it may not, it may be very few people that participate in this option. Or it could be a good number, then it makes sense to put it on the application. But if it's very few, then it should really just be a column in the business license spreadsheet that, that highlights for when Cassandra's sending out the application and the invoice, that it includes that to go into the invoice, separate from it being a box where someone that's filling it out and doesn't have a requirement would be like, what's this parking thing, right? So kind of streamline that dependent on if you're making it inclusive to all insufficient parking or just new as an option. Does that make sense what I'm saying?
So, when a business changes the footprint and it's got to go through planning, is there another cost to study for the parking also?
So when you say changes of the foot.
Yeah, like a business, if someone buys a building, reconfigures it and they're going to go through planning for their business, is there, is there going to be another fee to study for the parking as well? Is that going to add to the cost?
No, that's all the site development review.
Okay.
And really, not one building, aside from Cedar Site adding a storage building up above, has actually changed its footprint. Because they're fully built out wall-to-wall on the main drag. So it's really just in change of use, right? When it's a more heavy use, that that will trigger it. If it's a restaurant that has this many seats turning into another restaurant that does this many seats, we can't go after that person because now it's a restaurant currently. We can't go after them if it's the same use.
Okay.
If it went from.
Unless it was shut down for a year, you said.
Right. And if it went from like a retail clothing shop to a pub, we're going to review that. And that, that site development review is when that parking is reviewed, and that's all under one fee.
Okay. So.
So are we needing guidance tonight?
I just need you guys to... If it's okay to send it back to planning to start chewing on it and addressing it, then that's what I need from you guys.
That's where I was heading was... So just for clarification and understanding for me, what triggers this whole issue that it starts either here at council or at planning? In the context, historical context to that particular deal, was that something that was initiated through planning or was that initiated through council?
Way back then?
886, yeah.
It was council, as I understand it. Council was addressing the parking issue because there were parking issues out there, so we sent it to planning.
So somebody came to the city and to staff, initially to the city administrator, and said there was an issue with this. And it rose enough to a concern, it was pushed into planning. And then from there, they developed the ordinance which got pushed to us. So I guess the question is, in that final analysis is, some people question, is there really a need for it? I believe that planning is important from that standpoint. You know, that it's important that we don't end up in a position to where we find ourselves in a bad situation and we're trying to rectify it and it's we've gone too far and we can't do anything about it. That's what has happened in these large metropolitan areas where they let things go and they let things go and then eventually when the issue became to the point where it was prompted a need to do something, it was too late. So that is the question to me is, do we ask, which way do we intend to go with this? Do we intend to send it back to them to re-initiate this parking plan? Is parking an issue?
It's a little more complicated than that.
Well, how much more complicated can it get?
It isn't so much the parking's issue, it's that we have...
Standards.
Standards that say they have to provide a certain amount of off-street parking.
Okay, well, let's just stop right there. Let's just stop right there. Where is that standard at?
In Title IX.
In Title IX, okay. So the state is pushing this to us?
No.
Well, Title IX is...
Us.
That's entirely...
All of our planning lines are ordinances in one.
So we have somewhere along the line decided that...
We should have a standard.
Finish. Go ahead and say what you're gonna say.
Well, I mean, we have a choice here. Either we do something through a parking ordinance so we make what we already have work or we have to get rid of what we already have, but then there's issues with doing that.
Consequences.
Yeah, consequences, yeah. Which personally, I think would be worse.
Well, you basically said the same damn thing I said, so I'll do that. I just was doing it a little bit more simplified than that.
A lot of people get locked into the just parking aspect of it. Yeah, you don't have to walk more in a block in this town. You can find parking. Parking isn't really the issue, it's the issue of maybe in the future. It's having what we already have on the books and making something that works so we can have these businesses developed. Or get rid of the ordinance.
That's kind of the flip side of it is currently, aside from the Brunson Building, we don't have a terrible parking issue. But the downtown zone code says that buildings should be two to three stories high with living up above. A couple of those buildings turn into that and then you have an issue. We don't really have a way to solve it. And on this end of town, on that side of the street, we have a huge issue because there's nowhere for those people to go, so we gotta have some...
Well, ultimately, in the end, if you want, if your goal is to have successful businesses in its core area, if that plays out like the way you want it to, you're gonna have a parking issue at one time, sometime down the road. So the idea is to get ahead of the curve, at least in some aspects of that.
Then you can look at what this new thing from the planning commission actually does. It gets rid of the off-street parking. Gives them the option to infill everything and not have any off-street parking if they chose and pay the fee, which would just put everybody right on the street.
As long as we have parking available for them to use. Once we fill in those...
There's no mandate that they use that parking lot, though. The customers are still gonna park in the same place until there's just no one to park.
Of course they are, because we don't... I don't mean that, was that what you meant? Yes, they are.
So one option is if you amend 886 and clean up the stuff and put the fee where it should go so you can change it when you want. And then put a caveat that this is really, if you're not gonna make it everybody's problem, this is really new and enlarging business. So that you wouldn't allow someone to sell their current parking and build a building, right? As council, you guys can put that rule in there, but someone can't sell their parking and make a building. This option is really for people that don't have a property to use and...
But you're supposed to make it a financial difficulty for them.
Then you get back to fairness. Other people had to develop parking and then all of a sudden that goes away.
Well, no, everyone still has to have the required spots, whether they volunteer and buy it from the city or a neighbor. They could ask a neighbor to lease it, that's an option. Or they can develop it themselves. There's really a lot of options for a business in town. And then there's even more options for... One example is the property that busts the parking lot. That owner could take down that gray fence, take out enough fill, put in a parking lot and lease it for a dollar less than we will. There's a... You could do a lot of things. I mean, it's not a have-to if you have a current requirement, you have to satisfy it some way. Many options. Sorry.
No, please don't apologize. Part of me really wants to truly get into this. Part of me says maybe we need to wait and really do what we should do, which is pass it back to planning and let them digest it. I do have a question if you're going to let me entertain you for a moment. How many properties actually had to purchase property in order to provide parking? One?
Oh, no.
How many?
So the city had two with VCLC.
Okay.
That's straight.
Right.
Randy, RNS, Black Bear.
Dan Brown.
And when you say had to, as opposed to that they bought the adjacent property, is that what you're meaning? Because the post office would have been one of them that bought both properties and developed parking at some point. The dental office bought that parking.
And those were intentional because of the requirements under...
No, that's a different question. And I'd have to research how many of those were in that Title IX slot and how many did it because it's a good business practice to have a different parking. I'd have to look into that number. I know that Black Bear, RNS, VCLC for sure did it. Subway was already part of their property and I'd have to check on post office and dental office of what timing that was, how long they owned that.
Yep, because that to me actually is an important piece of this. In addition to the fact that I think we do need to be forward-thinking and not just dwelling on the fact that for the past 100 years and for knowing it, we haven't had a parking problem. In actuality, we do...
Who was doing all of that? Are you referring to me?
Oh, no.
Because I'm the only one that talked about 100 years here, so I'm assuming you're talking about me.
Oh, no, no. I am talking about everybody who...
Oh, I think it's just a general current conversation.
The general conversation. Oh, no. That had nothing to do with what you said.
When I referenced that, I didn't mean to...
Oh, no. I'm sorry.
No, I apologize.
I apologize if you felt that way.
If you're talking to me, go ahead and talk to me.
Oh, no. Trust me, if I have something to say to you, I will. No, just the generic comment that I always hear is, well, we've never had a problem with parking. But we do because I am one of those, whether you want to call it lazy, sometimes my knee is bad, my ankle hurts. I will drive by because it may not be that I can't park right there, but I don't know where I can park. I don't know, particularly in a town I'm not familiar with. If I don't know that there's parking one block, I'm gonna say, I'm sorry, you know, you're not doing a good job of selling me on stopping in your town, so I'm driving through, I can go to the next one. I think it's important that we're equitable about parking. And honestly, I think it's important for us to be very thoughtful and to direct planning to be very thoughtful. I appreciate all they did with On 1901. I mean, that was a heck of a lot of work they did. I recall spending a lot of time on 886, even though... Don't remember. As I said in an earlier meeting here, as I said at the hearing, I recall we've been working on this a long time, this parking issue. I want, I would really like planning to have the opportunity to readdress it. And I will stop now.
Well, I certainly don't. I share that feeling. That's what I thought it should go back to. To me, I've lived in this community all my life. And people talk about back in the day. Well, back in the day, the community leaders, the business owners who were the community leaders in this community, your uncle was one, you know, they took the bull by the horns. And they were the ones leading the way on this stuff. Instead of having a feeling like it's being shoved down their throat, they were the ones who were stepping forward saying, there's an issue here. Or I can see an issue here. For my business to succeed, I'm gonna need these things, you know? Somewhere along the line, we've lost that to a certain degree. So I just think if you want a business to succeed, you need a place... We're out here in the West, we don't... We drive our cars. That's how we get someplace. We're married to those things, you know? And so you need a place to park it to go into that business down there, those businesses. And so, you know, evidently, there needs to be some direction. And I think that's what we're searching for here.
So I can only see the one can of worms in here. I think probably everybody would agree we want the fee to be in the master fee schedule. It only makes sense to do it that way. That's how we do everything else. But the one can of worms is, are we gonna try to go retro and include everybody into this? Or are we gonna... I mean, what was just brought to us was just the new...
And enlarged.
Yeah. What do we want to push back towards planning? Or we want them... I would assume they're gonna push back the same thing they pushed to us, which was the limited scope of this, of just when somebody had a change of use or...
I don't know. I think, granted, different council back then, different planning commission back then. We worked very, very hard on it and in order to be fair and equitable, that's why that 886 came about. Everybody who has a business has people who may or... Hopefully, they have customers. And everybody should share in that responsibility, I believe is, was the intent at that time. And there was discussion. And I think that's why the $10 was probably come up with because that seemed a fair and equitable amount of money for people to be expected to pay for having a business in the downtown area.
So where does that lead, though? So you're collecting $10. What are you collecting $10 for? Development of parking? And what are we talking about there? Are we talking about the existing green spaces that we...
No, it outlines that the first one is that bullet block.
Yeah, I remember that part. I'm just saying as a general, it's the same language.
And I think if you do everyone, that's where that report has to be done because it would designate how many spots you were developing or working towards developing, right?
It seems more accurate.
But I think you're gonna have 20 times the number of people you had in here for the first version as you hold that second version. So you have to be willing to stomach that if that's what you're doing. Because we shouldn't go through the process of going to all the work to include it in the next version to have council go, no, we should just not include it from the get-go.
See, that's my point.
If council isn't feeling like they should do it...
Exactly what she's saying.
Yeah. Then we shouldn't waste the time of planning to say, hey, that's even an option. We really just need you to fix 886, make it similar to PA 01, and pull the fee out and we'll determine the fee. Right? So those are kind of your options. But as council, you're gonna have to stomach it. And they're gonna come in here the same way some of them did with the 886, with the you're putting them out of business, this is punitive. They're gonna come with all of it. So you gotta be prepared for it if that's what you're doing.
Well, as for a workshop, I don't know if you ever got an answer from Mr. Straight. You said you were gonna check because we closed the hearing. And now we're into this, so it seems to me like there's a lot here to discuss and maybe get both these things in front of us and spend a couple hours kind of hashing it out so we don't waste more planning commission time as far as what council consensus might be to what they would go for or not.
So then what, if you're gonna hash it out, then there's no sense in taking it back to planning?
First.
No, at all. Well, what's their job if you're already gonna amend it and make...
A minute ago, it was council directed stuff to planning and then it comes back.
No, I said back then they did. That's what they originally did.
Well, that gets to be an issue now for me as stuff comes up here that we... Nobody asked for that I know of, you know what I mean? If we didn't ask for it, why is it coming and becoming our problem to have to deal with? If we don't have any direction going back.
Because planning's job is to forward things for the city in land use decisions and urban growth boundaries and parking requirements and all of that. That is the job of the planning department.
Well, didn't you say that Title IX required that?
Yeah, and it requires the standard that the Brunson Building could not meet. So staff's version of it, having had a two-month-old baby and not remembering 1886 because I had a two-month-old baby, you know, was, hey, let's come up with an option that's voluntary, that's a lesser fee because we know they have no property around them. So that's how it initiated, was trying to help a business pull off their business plan. And it started in 2017, as she came to talk to us about it. We made an agreement and it finally got hashed out through planning in 2019. So that's kind of the cycle of what happened with this one, is that we were trying to make it so she wouldn't have to buy property to meet the requirement. How could we do it? So we went backwards and tried to make an option she could annually rent the spot from the city.
Well, I understand the issue and I understand what we're trying to do. But I also am a little bit leery of taking away the off-street parking requirement in whole because of maybe other issues it's gonna create down the road with infill and then...
But neither one of these takes it away as a whole.
I thought they said that we were doing away with that off-street parking requirement, period.
No, no.
No.
In the new version?
No. No, actually, we were looking for...
In lieu of meeting that off-street parking requirement, they could lease parking from the city via this much per spot.
So that off-street requirement was gonna stick?
Yes, stays. So but if someone can't beat it, if they don't have... Stacy's building is the whole built out.
Now I remember my thinking on that, that they could pay the fee for all the spots and then sell a lot and develop again if they wanted to.
So that's under the new one that we were talking about. But it occurs, it appears that we have one we have adopted that...
Similar.
Similar, but so it holds that... Don't we have to appeal that?
No, you would amend it to be what you want it to be. Whether you want to include everyone, only new, we'll take the fee out and then you'll have to determine what that fee is through the master fee schedule. And you can do that at the same meeting as you adopt your new thing.
And so you would have the planner help us with that, you mean? Is that what you're...
No, so basically, the one caveat of the difference is for council really, the rest of it's kind of semantics, right? The fee comes out, you're still going to determine the fee. They have a, they have a recommendation, but that is, I mean, you have to go on it. Or you extend out the life with the asphalt and you make it lesser somewhere in the middle. You guys are going to decide the fee. We're pulling it out of the ordinance. The real difference is, is it going to be for everyone and we're going to do a report to figure out what everyone should have, or is it only going to be for new and enlarged businesses? That's really the question for council. And then the rest of it, they bring back to you as a smash of the two things that you already have, the thing you already have in the new. Right? So that's the thing maybe you should have a workshop on is, do you want it to have everyone or do you want it to only have new and enlarged change of use businesses?
I think that I could still where that would be appropriate to have that workshop for that.
Or give me a chance to read this 886.
And it allows us to sit down and decide because in the end, no matter what we put forth other than if we say nothing, it's all free, you know, it's everything, you guys do whatever you want, you are going to get blowback from it and it...
Well, and if you say what, okay, so that's another difference. If you say there's no parking requirement, then that requires an amendment of Title IX to actually pull that stuff out, right?
Not with that as part of planning.
So...
Well, we could modify the requirements per square footage like we had a discussion about, see what other small towns have.
You could.
If we were excessive on something, we can say, hey, I don't know why we were so excessive on that one particular type of business and for Brunnhilde maybe that's not quite right.
Right. So what could, what you could do is when we amend Title IX to include whatever's in 886 at the end, when you've determined, we could also amend square footages. We're pretty similar, almost in exact except for a couple of things to Carlton. So I could pull a couple of other small communities and lay those side by side and you guys could look at that. Some of them actually add a parking spot per employee. So I don't know how you logistically figure that out.
Yeah.
Or if they tell you blow volume, I don't know, but...
I think that's, would be a good information to have.
Yeah.
And I like the idea of what you're, where you're going there with all that.
Counselor.
This is going to sound naive, maybe. Is that our job? Is that council's job or is that planning's job to kind of meet this?
Well, planning, the current planning commission already gave you what they want.
Right.
PA 01, right? So my concern is if you guys have a short work session and determine you don't want it to be everyone like 886 said, I don't want planning wasting their time thinking about that. That's my only decision I want you to say. And then the other thing you could say is from looking at four or five small cities, council would like you to really determine if this is an excessive amount of requirement or is it a legitimate requirement for the parking standard. And it's not going to be everyone because most of them are pretty legit, but there's a couple that are big. And then you kind of directed them, hey, fix 886, we don't want it to have this element that your new one doesn't have, if that's what you want. And we want you to take a second look at these things so when we change Title IX and we do all of it once, boom, it's in the code, nobody ever gets to forget it, it's on the business and you're good. I just don't want them wasting their time or going into a bunch of detail to figure out why they think maybe that should be it and then that council go, man, because that's just parking then.
Ultimately, we're the ones that bear the, it's our signature that goes on this.
Right, so it's just...